Let's get started. So, start recording, I guess.
Oh, wait.
There it is, Anya, everybody's here.
Garrett, is it recording?
No, it doesn't appear to be.
Oh, there we go.
That's who's missing, where's Gary?
Gary doesn't sit in on land use hearings. He's also has, I think, EMT and it's a two hour training today. All right, well, thank you for joining us on August 5th, 2020, for a land use hearing. And first off, I'd like to call the order of the meeting and, uh, I guess that's what, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
And to the body.
Where should stand?
One nation. One nation under God. Indis治able. Today, we will be considering ZDO 276, which is a proposed legislative text amendment to Clackamas County's comprehensive plan and zoning and development ordinance, which is an effort intended to make relatively minor changes to the county land use regulations that are necessary to comply with new and pending state federal mandates, to clarify existing language, to correct errors, and to adopt optional provisions that require only minimal analysis. A hearing on ZDO 276 will proceed as following. First here, a presentation from Staff Planner Glenn Hamburg. Next, I'll open the hearing for public testimony, beginning with public officials, who have five minutes, we now have seven attendees. Then the representatives from the recognized community planning organizations and agencies will have three minutes each. Finally, other visitor, which others wishing to testify will have a three minutes each. The board will then deliberate and either render a decision today or set a time to make a decision at a later date. Assisting us in the hearing today are County Clerk Mary Rathke, Planning Director Jennifer Hughes, Senior Planner Glenn Hamburg from the Planning and Zoning Division, Assistant County Council Nate Boderman. Assisting us on our broadcast webcast and webcast are Garrett Teague, Rich Marvin, and Kevin Galusha. Today, we are holding a land use hearing virtually. If you've joined us on the Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. The Zoom link and instructions to participate via Zoom are located at www.clackamas.us-meeting/pcc/landuse. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live during the public comment portion of the meeting. Be sure to include your name and area where you live. With that, we will now hear from Glenn Amber. Thank you, Glenn.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. I trust that you can hear me still okay. And I'm going to quickly share my screen so you can see our PowerPoint slides. And I believe these are working now as well. And everybody can see, great. As the Chair noted, this public hearing is in regards to ZDO 276. It's a package of minor and time sensitive amendments to the county's comprehensive plan and its zoning and development ordinance for this year. And in your packets, just to make sure you have had all the pieces, there is an agenda, there's a staff report to you, the board. There's a copy of this PowerPoint. In the packet that you receive, there's also a copy of the Planning Commission's report and minutes from their two occasions at a single public hearing on this project. Attachment A is the proposed amendments themselves, and they each have some summaries explaining what's taking place. And there should be a total of 20 exhibits that include the public comments that we received. As the Chair noted, this is a project that is intended to make what are small changes to the county's land use regulations and changes that only require minimal analysis by staff. This is a project that is specifically in the county's longer planning work program for this fiscal year. And it's intended that we do something like this basically every year to catch up with state mandates, to correct errors, and to adopt optional provisions that don't require a lot of thinking and a lot of public outreach. The work program specifically asked, though, that in addition to all of these minor bits and pieces that we be sure to address three specific issues. One of them is the noticing of land use actions in rural areas. One of them is the existing standards for commercial dog kennels in rural residential zones. And then the work program asks us to look at allowing certain types of small scale manufacturing in certain commercial zones. So it's a big package of lots of different pieces, but needs to, per the work program, focus also on these three key issues, as well as some others that I'll mention. So far, we've had two study sessions with the Planning Commission. These topics were also talked about with you, the board, back in February at a policy session. So some of these topics might seem pretty familiar. And then we had a formal hearing on the amendments before the Planning Commission last month. And that was, or rather, in June, and that was continued to July. From the Board of County Commissioners' Policy Session, they also asked us to look at, in addition to those three issues on the work program, adding a couple of others that I'll talk about. In total, the package of amendments in Attachment A has 15 broad actions that essentially are just responding to new state mandates, errors, and changes in order to provide clarification and consistency between uses in different zones. Three of the actions that all of these amendments take are technically optional. They provide new land uses in farm and forest zones pursuant to new allowances from state legislation. They would have minimal impact and are unanimously supported by the Planning Commission. And they've received no public comments on them. Five of the actions, though, have been the focus of the Planning Commission's discussion and public comment. And so for the sake of brevity, I'm going to focus just on those five key issues. The first one is one of those that is called for in the work program. And it has to do with the noticing of land use actions in rural areas. So as you might recall from our discussion about this policy session back in February, in rural areas right now, land use actions, so public hearings on land use applications or notice of land use applications themselves, only get sent out to property owners within five or 750 feet of the subject property, depending on the zone. And through some extensive discussion at the end of the last calendar year and some consultation with you, the board, in February, we are proposing precisely what you suggested that we propose, which is to extend that noticing distance to a half mile for certain land use applications in rural areas. So specifically, we would be extending under the proposed amendments, the noticing increase to a half mile of all what are called type three applications. So these are major land use applications like conditional use permits, major subdivisions, those types of things. We would be also extending to a half mile all public hearings on land use applications in rural areas. So that would include public hearings on any land use application that's appealed to the hearings officer. People would receive a notice if they are within one half mile of a subject property. Under the proposed amendments, and as suggested by the board back in February, the applications for certain land use applications would also be extended to a half mile. There are land use applications that include non-conforming use verifications and alterations in vested rights. These are land use applications that tend to generate the most public interest in rural areas and that have, because of their approval criteria, potentially the most opportunity for members of the public to influence with their comments. This would include applications, just as an example, the Douglas Ridge Rifle Range that came up during the work session. That was a non-conforming use alteration application. And to be sure, the proposed amendments would see that applications like that would be sent to neighbors within a half mile instead of just 500 or 750 feet. So this is precisely, as I said, what the County Commissioners suggested. It's unanimously supported by the Planning Commission. And we've received no comments on this proposal or against this proposal. That's the first significant issue. Then the package of amendments addresses these setbacks for commercial dog kennels in rural residential areas. So this is not a land use that's permitted outright. Rather, it's already the case, and the amendments would continue to require that this use receive a public hearing and be approved with a conditional use permit. And the conditional use permit criteria already evaluates, you know, the unique features of a property, the unique characteristics of the neighborhood, and the particular aspects of, in this case, a commercial dog kennel, before the hearings officer decides whether or not to approve it and approve it with any specific conditions to mitigate impacts. Despite all of that, the code nonetheless, despite the characteristics of the subject property, or even if the property was 100 miles away from any neighbor, the code requires that all features of the commercial dog kennel be set back at least 200 feet from property lines. And in development of the work program, the county heard from members of the public that this standard may be unnecessarily restrictive. And so at the February Policy Session and at study sessions with the Planning Commission, it was determined that reducing that setback to 100 feet would be more appropriate and would allow more properties to potentially qualify, while still needing to get that conditional use permit from the hearings officer. I should note that this is just a minimum proposed setback of 100 feet. It's possible, given the nature of the particular kennel, of the particular property and the neighborhood, that the hearings officer could condition an actual proposal for a commercial dog kennel to be set back further than 100 feet if that was determined to be appropriate. So it just reduces the minimum that's absolutely required from 200 feet to 100 feet. I see Commissioner Savas has a question. I'm happy to answer that now, if that's appropriate.
Yeah, if it works for you, Glenn, is this a good time on this one?
Yeah, I'm happy to just pause after each topic if it's more organized to have some conversations before moving on to the next.
Yeah, I understand the rationale on this one. However, I'm pretty concerned. I'll just relate back to a story, a brief one, is that I remember one day on a weekend, one of my neighbors about 700, 800 feet away from me came on my property, rolled up his sleeves, and he was going to punch me out because my dog was barking. And I pointed out that the dog that was barking was actually another 500 feet away. Okay, so it was almost 1,000 feet. And the dog was an incessant dog barking situation, and it was finally rectified years later. But the point of the matter is that 100 feet is awfully close, 200 feet is awfully close. But I think, is there a way to just write it that there's a minimum setback between any residential properties as opposed to the property lines?
It would be possible to say a setback from residentially zoned properties. The county has historically, I'm thinking back in the 1960s, originally a setback requirement not from property lines, but to dwelling units on other properties. That can be problematic, though, because it would require an applicant for a commercial dog kennel conditional use permit to somehow be able to determine how far that house on somebody else's property is away. And it may not be all that practical to be able to get onto somebody else's property and do the measuring. It also creates a situation that where a property owner and neighbor chooses to put their house could impact how somebody else can use their property. That may be why the county changed from the original setback requirements from residences in the 60s to just property lines. But it could be possible to, for example, to require a setback, a reduced setback from residentially zoned properties. However, the current restriction is just 200 feet from property lines. And we wouldn't want to do anything more restrictive than the existing rule.
Yeah, I'm just concerned about this one. And I don't know if, in the order of the, of this hearing, if there's a way to parse out or item for a vote. I'm just, I, I'm in agreement with the majority of the issues that are in the packet today. This one here I have difficulty with.
If I could just make one more thought about the setback requirements is that these are residentially zoned properties. And presumably, the neighbors are going to be residentially zoned as well. So we're pretty much talking setbacks from residentially zoned properties already, for the most part.
Yep, this, this one concerns me. 100 feet is not, I mean, 200 feet is nothing when it comes to noise.
I was going to say, most residential zones of properties probably aren't 100 feet in width.
And these are rural residential zone properties. So we're talking RRFF5, FF10, generally, but not necessarily outside of urban growth boundaries.
Yeah, and you know, just the fact that the kennel, and there would be a concentration of dogs there, you know, the likelihood of a lot of dog barking historically is a reality, it calls, more so than a, a home with a dog or two or three. Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, move on.
Okay.
Answer this question.
Okay, the next significant issue in this package has to do with what we shorthand called small scale manufacturing. But specifically, it's a proposal to allow the manufacturing of edible and drinkable products that are also retailed on the same property, as well as allowing sort of related wholesale distribution in six commercial zones that are shown on your screen. And then the bulleted list is just some examples around the county where you'll find these zoning designations. This topic came to us primarily from the Oak Grove community, who's been interested in finding a way to allow things like breweries or commercial bakeries or coffee roasters in the downtown Oak Grove area. That's one of these zoning districts. So that was their specific request originally, was a use that would allow the manufacture of edible and drinkable products that are retailed onsite. So if I have a pub, I might be able to also brew my beer under this proposal. Well, currently, that's not possible. Some other locations would be around Clackamas Town Center up in the Mount Hood area as well, Government Camp. So it would allow somebody to make something, to process barley, to process raw materials into something else, provided what they're making is edible or drinkable, and they're also selling it there to customers. The Planning Commission has been unanimously in favor of this. In the record and the exhibits, you'll see multiple comments from representatives of the Oak Grove area that are in support of the amendments as well. We've received no comments in opposition to it. We did just a few days ago, receive a request from the Oak Grove community to consider allowing other types of manufacturing as well. And they have submitted some suggestions into the record. Staff's perspective at the moment on that is, we have not noticed the, you know, CPOs in the county about the possibility of code amendments to allow other types of manufacturing. We've only told the county that we're considering allowing the manufacture of edible or drinkable products. And we've not fully vetted the particular proposed land use of allowing other types of manufacturing in these zones and done public outreach. So maybe that's something that we consider adding to a future work program and taking up after the fact. But at the moment, the proposed amendments in Attachment A are what were originally requested in the work program that we allow and that we also discussed at the Policy Session in February. Any questions about that, maybe before I move on?
Nope.
Okay. Significant issue number four is pretty straightforward for me to summarize. It's that we repeal the county's own restrictions on marijuana operating hours. So right now, the county code limits marijuana retailers, where they're allowed, to only operating between 10:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. However, the state could, would allow them, without this restriction, to operate longer hours. They could operate, if they wanted to, between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., essentially, four more hours per day if the retailer wanted to. Repealing the marijuana operating hour restrictions of the counties so that they could operate for longer hours would be consistent with nearby jurisdictions that allow for longer retailing hours. And we've heard from members of the retail industry that that would allow, remove a competitive disadvantage that they have and would also allow them to provide services to customers over a wider time period. This proposal has been unanimously supported by the Planning Commission. We have not received any comments in opposition to repealing these operating hour restrictions. We've received one letter, I believe, from a retailer in support of the amendments. The last significant issue, the last issue that really generated the most discussion has to do with small wireless facilities. These are relatively compact devices that help in the deployment of 5G technology or will. Essentially, the county is required to allow this land use for somebody to put up one of these small wireless facilities. They're required to by a new FCC order that's already in existence. The proposal in Attachment A is for all of these facilities that are in public rights of way to not be regulated by the zoning code, but rather under the county's roadway standards. Because the county's recently updated roadway standards already have standards for these types of facilities in county rights of way. So what they look like, where they have to be placed, those types of things. What's the proposal here before you today is, is standards for these devices on private property. So not along streets in public rights way, but perhaps attached to a private building or on a freestanding pole on private property. We've heard from the industry that the initial interest in the deployment of this technology will be focused on deployment in rights of way and not on private property. And we're limited in, by the FCC mandate, in what we can do to control the aesthetics of these devices and so forth. However, we do propose some restrictions on what they look like. For example, the amendments would require that these devices not be placed on trees or on any other vegetation. They would require that the devices be the same or substantially similar color as any portion of a building that they're attached to, just so that they maybe help blend in a little bit better. The Planning Commission has asked that they be non-reflective, that they have non-reflective materials on their outside, again, to just help them blend in. And that if they happen to have any lighting on them, that that lighting be shrouded from adjacent residential properties. The amendments are different than what we originally proposed. What we originally proposed was something, I'll say, a little bit stricter. It said, for example, that the devices had to be the same color. But then we heard from representatives of the wireless industry that that could be maybe difficult for them to find, you know, a precise, exact color of a portion of the building. So at their request and at the Planning Commission's recommendation, we've changed it to say that something that's substantially similar. And the proposed aesthetic requirements for these would be in line with the FCC mandate, and they would be no more restrictive than any other similar types of devices that would already be allowed on private property. So that's the last significant issue. And maybe there's some questions about this? None?
Yeah, I do on this one. So you may have said it, I may have missed it. Was there any testimony or opposition to this one? You may have already said it, I missed it, I'm sorry.
No, not formally in the record, though. We have heard, for example, that there are concerns about the health impacts of small wireless facilities. But I should be clear that the FCC mandate precludes the county from considering the perceived health impacts of small wireless facilities in their regulations.
Yeah, because I have heard over the last year or so concerns about health issues with 5G devices. And I don't know if that's just, you know, fact or myth or, you know, unproven or yet to be established reality, if you will, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm manufacturing aluminum hats at my house. Ken?
Yes, I have a, I have a neighbor that is concerned about this. But I informed him the other day of federal government's position on it and that we had no choice. His concern is based on information he has from somebody who's worked in the industry. And what he wants is actually a federal study on, on the impact of 5G, whether there is one or not. So, but I informed him of our position and why we have to take the position that we have. So it's probably why he didn't choose to testify.
Jim, I do have a process question. It was similar to the one I raised earlier. Three of these significant issues of the, yeah, I have some consternation with the marijuana hours, this one here, a little bit. But more so, and most, most definitely, the spacing issue on the dog kennel one. So are we going to break these out? Or is it just, there's just one vote for the package?
So let's go to the public testimony and then we can discuss that after, okay?
Right.
All right, if we have any. So with that, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. Are there any public officials wishing to testify? If you have, if there are, you have five minutes each. If there are any representative CPO or agencies who wish to testify, you'll have three minutes. Well, now here, public testimony from the public. I'll call the names of the people, well, actually, somebody else will. Who's going to call the names?
I'm there.
You will, okay. Call the names of those people who wish to testify, and you'll have three minutes. Well, and with that, let's go ahead and see if anyone wants to testify.
Okay, it looks like we have one person, Susan Wolf. I'm bringing her over. If you could unmute yourself, and you have three minutes.
Are you able, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
We, we can hear you.
Okay, very good, thank you. My name is Suzanne Wolf, and good morning to all of you. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I live in the Oak Grove area, and I am currently serving as president of the historic downtown Oak Grove nonprofit organization. We have about 20 voting members. And we, our purpose is to revitalize the downtown area of Oak Grove. As Glenn had mentioned to you, we have submitted two letters at this point in regard to the draft amendment to allow the manufacturing of edible and drinkable products in districts specific to Oak Grove, which would be District C2 and C3. The first letter that we wrote was in June to the Planning Commission, and we are in favor of that amendment. The impetus behind that was, was an informal survey that was taken during a summer festival in 2017. And there were about nine people who had, who had posted that they would like to see bakeries and brew pubs in the downtown area of Oak Grove. And from that, we had And from that, we had reached out to Joseph Edge with the Oak Grove Community Council, and he has been helping us to advocate for that change. The other letter that we wrote was just recently to the board, to you, the board, and we had, in that letter, requested that you consider adding an artisan manufacturing definition to the amendment. This would allow for other types of businesses other than bakeries and brew pubs, which were first requested at the, at the summer festival in 2017. This, this letter came about with, from a recent meeting, general membership meeting that we held about two weeks ago. We have about 20 voting members that I mentioned, and 10 of them were present, and they had all agreed that we should ask the board to consider adding an artisan definition to the amendment. I want to add that in this letter that we've included an artisan definition based on a land use definition from Nashville, Tennessee, our board, though, modified the definition by adding the word "light", meaning little to no vibrations, noise, fumes, and other nuisances. This would describe the type of mechanical and electronic tools that could be used. So with that, I want to thank not only Glenn Hamburger, sorry, not hamburger, Hamburg, for being supportive along with Planning Commission. I also want to thank Joseph Edge with the Oak Grove Community Council, who was also very supportive. Okay, I'm finished, and thank you for your attention. Any questions? I welcome.
Suzanne, I guess a comment, and, and that is that Glenn suggested that because it wasn't noticed, the other manufacturing, that we would probably have to put that on a future discussion. And that the board can decide now, after, after we take in the testimony. It looks like you're the only one testifying, but, okay?
I understand, and thank you, that makes sense to me.
Thank you, have a great day.
All right.
Stay healthy.
Thank you, you too, guys. Thanks a lot, bye-bye.
All right, with that, just don't see any others, we'll close the public hearing. And with that, we'll have some discussion. So Paul, I'm perfectly satisfied to take each issue and divide it out. I'm not sure that I agree with your concerns, but let's have a discussion. We do have lots of other business today, so let's not spend too much time. But with that, go ahead, Paul.
Well, I, I don't really have a whole lot to add. My, my, this is more of a process question. I mean, I don't want to make things more difficult. I would like to be able to vote for, you know, a number of these amendments I'm completely okay with. It's just those particular three and that particular one, and, you know, most especially that, that I have an issue with. I don't want to cast a vote against all of these because of one. So that's my issue, but I don't want to make more work for it. And if the end vote is to, to adopt the package, then again, we got the same, same situation. So I don't, I don't really want to cause any more work than we have to. But I mentioned this yesterday, I think, or the day before, in, in a preparatory meeting. And so I guess the question really is, staff, what can we do here this morning?
Well, we only have one ZDO, so we would have to amend portions of the ZDO and say, vote for the ZDO with amendments, right?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I could compromise. I mean, if, if the board said they didn't want to, let's just say hypothetically, the board said they didn't, they, they agreed that we didn't want to change the setbacks and reduce it from 200 to 100 and just maintain the 200, I could probably, you know, bite my tongue and vote yes for the remainder. But if that's not the will of the board, then I, I, I might just be forced to vote against the whole package, which I really don't want to do.
Okay, Nate?
Yeah, so what, what we've done in the past with these sort of omnibus ZDO-type amendments is where there's general consensus to, to move forward, we typically have the board vote to approve, and that sounds like it's the general consensus here. And once we have a vote to approve, then we take each of the issues that are identified, issue by issue. And then if there are modifications, we just modify that original vote so that it's approved with the modifications. And so staff can help track those. But that would be my suggestion, is, is go ahead and make a motion and vote on just a general approval. And if that passes, then you can enter into discussions about individual topics.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve ZDO 276 as recommended by the Planning Commission and staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
We moved in second, that we approve ZDO 276 as recommended by the Planning Commission and staff. And I guess, so now we should poll and then discuss some amendments, right, Nate? Is that what you said?
Yeah, let's handle it that way.
Okay.
So if, if we poll, then I'm forced to vote no.
I, I would say it's better to make the amendments, and then...
Before, before you vote. It's, it's, yeah, it, it's goofy, it's goofy. And if you want to handle that, leave the motion out there prior to vote and discuss each of the amendments. That, that makes sense to me, yeah.
No, well, I mean, the one that concerns Paul is the 100 versus 200 is a major issue. Why are we changing that to 100? Is it the size of the land, or...? Go ahead, Nate, Glenn.
Sure, yeah. The proposed reduction would conceivably allow more rural residential properties to qualify for the opportunity to apply for a conditional use permit. And right now, as a diagram on a previous slide showed, if you imagine a 50 by 50 kennel area, the existing 200-foot setback requirement effectively means you need about 4.65 acres to even pursue a conditional use permit. The reduction to a minimum setback requirement of only 100 feet would conceivably allow for smaller properties to qualify, but still have to go get a conditional use permit, show that their property can accommodate the kennel without bothering neighbors, essentially. And if necessary, the hearings officer could require, as a condition of approval, any setbacks that are necessary to mitigate impacts to the neighborhood, be it the minimum 100 feet or something greater than that. They could still require 200 feet or 500 feet, or however much they need.
Now, answer me this. What's a dog bark sound like? No, how many applications have we had for kennels?
Hardly, hardly any. In fact, I cannot find one since the late 1980s. But that might just be because people don't bother applying because they know they can't meet the setback requirement. There may be people that call us or are interested in doing it, but find out they couldn't meet the setback requirement, so don't even bother.
Okay, Ken?
I, I guess my, my only question was, what precipitated this change? Did somebody come to you and ask specifically to get it changed? Or was this just something that the staff came up with themselves and presented to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, looking at this particular issue was included in the adopted work program. We were directed to consider this issue as part of this project. And the, as I understand it, the idea for including this in the work program came in part from a former planning commissioner, their suggestion, as well as some input, input from members of the public who were looking to start a kennel but found the setback requirements problematic.
Well, having had, I guess what I would say is having had, lived in a rural area most of my, my life, and actually had a kennel business, boarding kennel, it's an expectation that, that you don't have the same... That there are things that you tolerate in rural areas that you wouldn't tolerate in an urbanized area, and vice versa, quite frankly. And kennel businesses don't belong, for instance, in a highly urbanized area that people are too close together. But you could literally have a half, a half a mile setback, and you're still going to go dog bark. There's, there's no getting away from it. So I, you know, I have real mixed feelings. I understand how people feel when there's a lot of dog barking going on, and that seems to me to be more of a code enforcement issue. Because I believe our code says that dogs shouldn't bark for more than 10 or 20 minutes, in which, at which points they're, they're in violation. Of course, enforcement is, is of our codes has been problematic also. So I have real mixed feelings on it, quite frankly. I mean, I get Commissioner Savis' concern, but 100 feet, 200 feet, you're going to hear the dog bark. You could hear them from quarter of a mile, half a mile away.
Yeah, the horses in my backyard, which is about 10 acres away, sound like they're in my backyard. Paul?
Well, where I grew, I grew up in a rural area, surrounded by hundreds of acres of, of dairies, so, and other kinds of livestock. So I'm...
And smell.
I am, well, that too, but I'm not talking about that, I'm just talking about the noise. So, yeah, I, I think there is that assumption. But I'll, I'll tell you one thing, the, the, what I hear from elderly people, most especially, or our senior citizens, that piercing sound, especially when they have their hearing aids, which I don't have, I don't know what it's like, is extremely bothersome. And it's, it's something that, we have a lot of senior citizens who live in the rural areas. I'm being sensitive to that, I've heard this for years. And, yeah, I can imagine the, the code enforcement officer walking up to a kennel and saying, I heard, I understand that one of your dogs is barking, which one is it? I can imagine. I mean, it's, it puts staff in a very untellied position, and reducing this, obviously, if there's a motive or what precipitated it, might be an interest to, for a particular property owner to do just this, to be able to use their property for a kennel and maybe others. So I'm, I'm assuming that there'll be, if this passes, there'll be an application in the near future. I mean, because something, as you, as you stated, Ken, you know, there was, there is an interest in that. And I, again, I'm just kind of sensitive to the quality of life in our, in our county. And I know it's not a perfect world. And I, I know that even the, you know, had issues with the people using their, their, their property for shooting, shooting range. That noise, you know, for, on the weekends, for example, day, day in and day out, a personal friend of mine still have issues with that. I, I don't know.
So Paul, I suggest you make a motion to make that amendment, we'll see what the vote is.
Okay, I, I, what, what's the best language, Nate, to, to use to, to strike that change?
I'm in the motion.
Yeah, I mean, just to, let's just make a generic reference to removing that particular provision. And I'm looking for the language here, but...
Okay, I, I asked for amendment to remove the spacing requirement for the dog kennel element of this package.
And leave it as it currently exists, probably.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second? I don't hear one.
I'll second it.
Okay, I was going to do that, too. All right, it's been moved in second, any further discussion? Let's, let's vote on it. Mary? Did you want to say something, Paul? No. Mary, let's poll us on the amendment.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner Humberston?
No.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Sheriff Bernard?
You put me in this position.
Oh, are we having fun yet?
Well, I'm going to say aye, too. So motion carries.
There you go.
All right, so any other motions to consider? All right, so to the, Paul, did you want to say something?
No, I, I, I said that if I can get past this one, I, I could bite my tongue and support the rest.
Okay, so with that, it's, I guess we have to, should we make the motion makers accept the amendment? We should have probably had that earlier.
As the maker of the motion, I accept the amendment.
Good, thank you.
And who was...
The second has to do the same.
Was it Martha? Martha, were you the motion maker or the second?
I was the second, what do I need to do?
Are you okay with the amendment?
Yes, absolutely.
So Mary, it's been moved in second to approve ZDO 276 as recommended by the Planning Commission and amended.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humberston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
You can hear barking dogs in the background.
And Sheriff Bernard?
Aye, motion carries unanimously. I just want to mention that, thank you, Martha, I used to have to play a recording of the dog bark for Paul all the time. Let's see, what do I need to read? Now that, okay, now that the ZDO 276 has passed and has amended, I'll direct staff to draft an ordinance reflecting today's decision and include it on the agenda for the board's adoption at a future business meeting. Right, covered?
I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I just want to know, when does it go into effect? When do the various, just go, go into effect?
I'll comment on that. We need to bring it to a business meeting, and given our schedule and then your recess, I think that probably won't happen until, we'll, we'll try to do it the first week you're back in September. And then normally, we build in about a 30-day, so somewhere in early October is what I would say. Does that sound right, Nate?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, the hearing for ZDO 276 is closed, and we need to take a break till 10:30, and I'll let the others know that we're ready to discuss the child...